Good evening, everyone, and welcome tonight to Monday, January 4th. Organization meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone to an exciting night. Remind everyone that there's a lot of family and friends, so people get excited, so please try to... Please be polite through the festivities. I think the first word of Business 1A is to... Well, we're gonna switch it to the tax collector first, so if the Honorable Michael Barnes comes where we're in our tax collector. In front of the flag, please, Mike. I state your name. Do solemnly swear. That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. I say your name.
I, Bill Papitone.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And that I will discharge
That I will discharge.
the duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
with fidelity.
With fidelity.
I state your name.
Danielle Larison.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And that I will discharge
And that I will discharge
the duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
with fidelity.
With fidelity.
I state your name.
I, Debbie Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And that I will discharge
And that I will discharge
the duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
with fidelity. Have you nice one?
Good.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear. Ah, I Ted Parker. Do solemnly swear.
Support.
Obey.
Obey.
Defend.
And defend.
Constitution.
The Constitution
Of the United States.
And the Constitution
Of this Commonwealth.
Of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Would everyone please rise for a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance?
The United States of America, the jury of all who stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, and free to be just as well.
Mr. Sumi, can you have a roll call, please?
Mayor David Bell.
Here.
Councilman Victor Cicero.
Yeah.
Councilman Fred Kern.
Present.
Councilwoman Corinne Cronicle.
Here.
Councilwoman Danielle Larison.
Here.
Councilman Ted Parker.
Here.
Councilman Bill Pepitone.
Here.
Councilman Ted Stanford.
Todd.
Todd Sanford, excuse me, thank you. Here. Councilwoman Debbie Smith.
Here.
Um, do we don't have Anna Zuckerman here?
No.
Uh, Solicitor Sean Kilkeny. Vincent Rangiani here for Kilkeny Law. And me myself, Bob Sumi.
Thanks, Bob. Now, we're gonna have item number five, the hearing of the public. Bob, would you call up the residents, please?
Yeah, I guess. Damon Miller.
Damon Miller, two. Right on. One, two, there we go. Thank you. Damon Miller, 249 West Franklin Street. First of all, congratulations to the new members of council, as well as those who were re-elected. And while it's not the Peace Corps, it may be close to the toughest job you'll ever love. But anyway. Speaking on behalf of the school board, as I'm the president, I just want to remind those on council that we do have a joint committee for those who are normally held by three members from council, as well as three members from the school board. We changed the meeting schedule. Hopefully, it'll be a little bit more convenient for everybody. And this is gonna be a note for the public as well, should be advertised as well, so. We're only gonna meet four times out of the year, calendar year. Our first meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 3rd. And the meetings are gonna begin at 7:30 instead of 7 o'clock. They can be held in the large group instruction room at the high school. So we're gonna meet on February, in May, in August, and November. It'll be the first Wednesday of the month at 7:30. So I hope that council members will continue the history that the previous council had by attending meetings. And hopefully, the meeting schedules be a little bit more convenient for everybody. And I certainly welcome your participation. I would assume that in between those meetings, conversations can still happen. It's just that basically during these four meeting times, it'll be an opportunity for everybody to as well as the public is always invited to those meetings. Thank you.
Next person, Kurt Holbridge.
Good evening. Happy New Year, and welcome to new council members. Congratulations on your victories in last election. Just a couple of things I wanna touch on. There were nice little article. How could they feel hired a new municipal manager? They brought in someone that were 29 years as a manager with strong municipal finance skills and significant professional experience. Just wanted to just touch on, we advertise our position to have certain criteria be met as condition of getting a job. College degree, experience as a manager, parent budgets, lots of things like that that you need to have throughout a borough. I talked to you last month, Mr. Sumi. You said that you know our town really well because you've been here for seven years. In those seven years, we didn't see a lot of funds coming in to our borough while you were here. Why is that changing now that you're gonna be a borough manager? How was that gonna change our town's fortunes, getting resources out of the county or state level? You said it's because you know people and you know how to get money from them. But you've been here seven years working in the town and you haven't gotten that. The job, they said, was advertised with certain criteria. And even you admit yourself that you didn't meet those criteria. I'm hoping as a resident that the council looks to re-advertise or a borough manager through a third-party firm that will procure the resumes, resubmit your resume. And if you are truly the best choice, that will come through again. And by the way, I know it was in the paper from years ago when you ran for public office that you were on disability from Amtrak. You holding this full-time job, does that impact your disability from Amtrak? That puts a half a full-time job or a disability, is that correct?
Uh, next person would be Jane Berger.
Good evening. Jane Berger, 90 West Maple Avenue. Congratulations to our newly sworn-in members of Borough Council. The oath you took this evening is the oath that every elected official on that dais takes. So they've had the chance to hear it new, first time for the newly elected. And for those of you on the dais who took the oath two years ago, you have the chance to listen to it again. The things that it asks you is to uphold the US Constitution and the Pennsylvania Constitution. And we know that all laws flow from those to documents, even down to the local laws or ordinances. It also asks you to discharge your duties with fidelity. You know, just what does that mean? The applicable definition of fidelity, as defined in the federal government, is a faithfulness to your obligations, duties, and adherence to truth and accuracy regarding detail. I am confident you will all keep this in mind as you carry out your duties as members of council. And the mayor don't wanna overlook you, Mr. Mayor. You took that up two years ago, and I know you're working hard as well. On the agenda tonight are several items. One is the motion to appoint a borough manager's assistant. And I'm wondering when the Borough Council created this new position? I attended the budget meetings, and I see in the budget and your salary statement, there is a position there of Assistant Borough Manager. And that is a very different job. So I don't know if that is a misprint this evening. I certainly would like to know how that additional administrative position came to be. If it should be the Assistant Borough Manager, then I guess the question is, why does the Assistant Manager have to be re-appointed every organization and not the Borough Manager? Perhaps the Solicitor can address that. Other under appointments, the vacant primary review committee. There are two. One is the Borough Manager. I'd like to know what the other one is. The composition of that is set by ordinance. It's a member of the Redevelopment Authority, the mayor, a member of council, the manager, and I believe someone from the Planning Commission. So if you'd be able to clarify who that's going to be, I would appreciate that. There are other appointments on the agenda tonight for the professionals, specifically the Solicitor and the Engineer. I never liked pay-to-play for professionals, particularly for the Solicitors and the Engineers. We know it's done, and we know it's legal, but these professionals make political contributions to candidates. However, when an appointment is made for someone who has made substantial contributions to a candidate or to a candidate's pack, can we really be sure that the vote for that individual is based on their qualifications and past experience, or a thank you for their financial support? Looking at the financial reports from the Democrats for Progress and individual council candidates, we do know that Mr. Cal Kennedy contributed to the campaign of Mr. Parker. I cannot identify anything specific from that gentleman for the Democrats for Progress. But I do find it interesting that Wheelan for Pottstown, which is the Montgomery County borough, and Dan Wheelan is the councilman in that borough, would make a thousand-dollar contribution to the Democrats for Progress. Again, I state it is legal. It's just, you know, not a practice I'm concerned with, or yet that I don't approve of. Second, for the Engineer, the Democrats for Progress received contributions of at least $800 from Thomas Beach. He's an executive VP, a principal in the engineering firm of Remington Verret and his affiliate Remington Verret Beach. Unfortunately, the campaign finance reports for Mr. Beach failed to provide all the required information documenting his occupation, employer, name, and address to verify where Mr. Beach works. However, on the website, as recent as today, he is listed as the titles that I gave. So if council is considering voting to return that engineering firm, again, I ask, is it because of their work and because of political contributions? I had the opportunity this morning to attend the swearing-in of the Bucks County Commissioners and the Row Officers. It was very well-attended and all very respectful. All three Commissioners, Mr. Lockerty, Miss Ellis, Diane Ellis McSarria, Marsehia, I'm sorry, Diane, and Charlie Martin, spoke about their ability to work together during these past four years and a pledge to continue to do it during their next term. Yes, they admitted there were times when they disagreed, but they were respectful and they looked for opportunities where they agreed. Working in a bipartisan manner to compromise a half a loaf is better than none and to move the agenda forward on behalf of the residents of Bucks County. They have set the standard. Now I look to this Borough Council, as you begin this new season, to work together, focusing on issues and needs, and not who belongs to which political party. I know you can do it. I would also suggest that you begin your work sessions in January to authorize an audit of the 2015 Borough Funds. There has been a change in a manager who has served here for five years. As you will recall, when Mr. Bates came on as Borough Manager, there was an audit of the 2010 funds. That was a transition year from Mr. Mount to Mr. Bates. It is a good practice, and I believe there may be a provision in the Borough Ordinance that actually requires you to do that. You're not your Solicitor, and you can check that out. Perhaps you may even get a discount on one of those audits because the auditing firm that you hired is a reputable firm, well-known, and they will be doing the recorded annual forms audit for DCED. So if they do this audit, you know, you might get a better price since they're in here doing the works. Blessings and good luck. Your task is not always easy, but doing the right thing, the right way, for the right reason, even when there are differences of opinion, will certainly gain the support, respect, and admiration of the residents. Thank you. God bless. Have a good day.
Thank you. That will conclude the hearing of the public for this evening. We'll move on to item 6A, your nominations for President of Borough Council, Mr. Miller. May I have a motion?
I'd like to nominate Fred Kern.
We have a nomination for Fred Kern. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Debbie Smith.
Thank you. We have second nomination for Debbie Smith. Are there any other nominations at this time? Okay, this is the third time. Are there any other nominations? Hearing done, I will close the nominations. And Mr. Sumi, would you call for a roll call vote for this motion?
Mr. Cicero.
Fred Kern.
Mr. Kern.
Mr. Kern.
Mrs. Cronicle.
Fred Kern.
Mrs. Larison.
Debbie Smith.
Mr. Parker.
Fred Kern.
Mr. Pepitone.
Debbie Smith.
Mr. Sanford. Debbie Smith and Mrs. Smith.
Debbie Smith.
Well, Jane, so much for the first...
Three-way situation.
That looks like it comes out to a 4-4. I just wanna thank everyone for putting me in the middle of this. I thought this council would actually work a little better. Actually, I know I'm just supposed to vote, but you actually gave two very good candidates this evening. However, Mr. Kern was Vice President for, I think, forty years or so. I vote for Mr. Kern. Next, may I ask for nominations for Vice President for our council?
I'll nominate Ted Parker.
I nominate Debbie Smith.
Mr. Cicero.
Ted Parker.
Mr. Kern.
Mrs. Parker.
Mrs. Cronicle.
Ted Parker.
Mrs. Larison.
Debbie Smith.
Mr. Parker.
Ted Parker.
Mr. Pepitone.
Debbie Smith.
Mr. Sanford. Debbie Smith. Mrs. Smith.
Debbie Smith. You're on, man.
Now we have 7A, motion to appoint Borough Manager's Assistant.
Okay, then I'm gonna speak up if I can. Can I have the floor? Okay. I pulled the information today and back at our agenda meeting, I'm sorry, our finance meeting for the budget. On our wage-deductive sheet that we were given, it had the position as Assistant Borough Manager, and the money was allocated.
and the money was allotted in that line. Then, at the 21st of December, we did our actual meeting. Sometime between that time and it actually went to the meeting that day, we were obviously given another one that says it's a Manager's Assistant. Now, all this time, it's been Assistant Borough Manager and there's been a little bit of a riff about that. So who decides to make that change in that title? Because I don't believe you could. It would be the council to make the change in that title. So is it the Assistant Borough Manager or Manager's Assistant? Is there a difference?
I don't believe we've made a change from Assistant Borough Manager.
So you're stating that this is a misprint?
But I think we can make that change if it's on point.
This, I don't want to put you on the spot there, Mr. Soubey, but did you happen to know that or you didn't?
No, I was told that that was changed to Borough Manager's Assistant.
And it was changed back in December, do you know, for that meeting?
I can believe so. I could look in the minutes, but almost positive that was brought up.
Yeah, I don't recall that being actually announced. I would have said something back then. So you're stating that it is Manager's Assistant is now the new name?
Correct.
What's the difference?
Well, I would think it has to reflect the budget. So however the budget allocates the right is how it should be titled. Although it's always been my recollection, Assistant Borough Manager.
What's the difference?
Well, you have a solicitor. Does it make a difference or should it reflect?
Hey, I was on the spot of matter, which is.
Yeah, no.
Your name's?
It's at the council's discretion to create or eliminate professional services positions. And in terms of the title, the most prudent thing to do is to have it reflect the budget as passed. So the council does, I'm reticent to say this. The council does have 10 days to reopen the budget, so it could still be changed. But for the time being, the most prudent thing to do would be have it mirror the language of the budget as it was passed.
It was Manager's Assistant.
So do you want a nomination for a Manager's Assistant or an Assistant Borough Manager?
I asked for a Manager Assistant.
All right, I'll make the nomination. I nominate Bob Seward.
Do we have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Uh, it's open up for discussion.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
We had a discussion beforehand and I thought that was.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. Mr. Council President, I'm going to abstain on this vote. Just to let you know, based on the fact that I was not allowed into the Borough Manager's Hiring Process, I'm not aware of what the Assistant or Borough Manager's Assistant duties and responsibilities are. But until comfortable voting, I'm going to abstain.
Also for me, I mean, I was in that executive session. I made it very clear how I felt about that position. And I won't get into detail about that because it is personnel. But I was against it being titled as that being put in there on the full budget instead of being put in maybe as a stifle instead for a certain period of time for assistance. So just to let you know, that's how I felt about that.
I also wasn't in, I wasn't prepared to what was discussed as far as the Borough Manager. I'm also going to abstain from that vote also.
Mr. Cicero.
Robert Seward.
Mr. Kernar.
Seward.
Mrs. Cronicle.
Bob Seward.
Mr. Parker.
Bob Seward.
Mr. Sanford.
I'm going to abstain from this.
You have to give a reason. It's a no or a yes.
It's going to be a no.
Okay.
Mrs. Smith.
No.
Motion passes four-two-two. Four-two and two exceptions.
You need five. You need five. You don't have five.
You don't need five.
You need five. You need five. Look it up. And it's not a tie.
It's not a tie. There are four yays. And the quote-unquote tie-breaking vote from the mayor is only required when necessary. And if the mayor's prerogative, whether or cast that vote in that situation. So it's not, in fact, required.
Council President, point of order, don't command the audience.
Point of order, don't command the audience.
The council is in session and it should be run businesslike.
I agree, sir. The essential in law, arrests may raise at any time to raise a point of order.
Dave, would you like to break the non-tie?
It's not a tie.
I said it's a non-tie.
We'll break it anyhow.
It's up to Mayor Parker to find a clue. I'd like to hear from the citizens. If you feel it's necessary, if you feel it's necessary, I'll go.
I believe it's the mayor's prerogative.
Okay, well, Bob Seward.
We have Bob Seward as the Borough Manager's Assistant by going four to two to two. Okay, mayoral. Mayor will walk to mayor's decision. In the budget, it reads Assistant Manager. Well, it might be different on the schedule. It's a separate.
You want to make sure it's what the latest budget requires.
I think to avoid any potential ambiguity, you may as well just recall the roll call on Assistant Borough Manager. No, no, Assistant Borough Manager. Borough Manager's recall. Correct.
On the name you're saying, that correct name on that motion is what you're saying or that title?
Yeah. The title will remain as it is in the budget, which is Assistant Borough Manager.
Okay. We're going to vote to actually formally vote that name for that, is what you're saying?
We're voting now on the appointment. We, the previous roll call was on Borough Manager's Assistant. And we've since clarified that the budget calls the position Assistant Borough Manager. So to avoid any confusion, we're just going to.
Do it again.
Do it again.
Okay.
I'm going to ask for nominations for the Assistant Borough Manager.
I'll nominate Robert Seward as the Assistant Borough Manager. Did I say it right?
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Now, we have some more discussion.
Only one thing. It probably should be a yes or no vote up and down because there's only one candidate. So only one nomination.
Mr. Cicero.
Robert Seward, yes.
Mr. Kernar.
Yes.
Mrs. Cronicle.
Yes.
Mrs. Larison.
No.
I'm sorry, abstained. Sorry.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Sanford. Mrs. Smith.
No.
For the record, I'm discussing my law. I'm right to raise, point again, that it was not a majority. This time I will refer you to the nominations and the vote for the Tax Collector. The vote was four for Michelle, two for one other candidate, two for one other candidate. The solicitor in attendance at that evening was Ms. Allison, I can't say her last name, from Mr. Kilpenny's law firm. And she said it was not a majority. They had you vote it again. On the second vote, there was a change and then it was five, there was a majority. And then Michelle was a white tax collector. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, it's the mayor's prerogative. Correct. So five-two-two is. Uh, yes, but now we voted on it twice, so.
Now we have seven Ds. A motion to appoint the Borough Secretary.
I made the motion to appoint Nancy Sherlock as Borough Secretary.
What? Please take it back in the gavel. Have some respect.
I'd like to nominate Virginia Cypress.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Robert Soubey.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? On voice vote. I guess any discussion should be first.
Um, yes. Actually, I would like to, with all due respect to Mr. Soubey, and I know he's been put in as the manager at this time. He is new at this and my decision on Virginia is that she's done this before and she's currently working in the borough. And I think she could do that job and has nothing to do against Mr. Soubey. I just think at this time, he's just too new to be taking that on. There's just a combination part.
This is just discussion.
Yeah, yeah, that's just discussion part, yeah.
We have three names on the call. Favorite candidate.
Now do the roll call.
Mr. Cicero.
Sherlock.
Mr. Kernar.
Sherlock.
Mrs. Cronicle.
Nancy Sherlock.
Mrs. Larison.
Virginia Cypress.
Mr. Parker.
Robert Soubey.
Mr. Peppetown.
Virginia Cypress.
Mr. Sanford.
Virginia Cypress.
Mrs. Smith.
Virginia Cypress.
Can't have it both ways.
We need a revote because we don't have the majority again, all right?
Can't have it both ways. You got four.
Put the mayor vote.
Can't have it both ways.
It's the mayor's party. Not the same situation because we have three candidates. Like what happened with the Tax Collector, we revoke.
Everybody has to repeat the vote.
Mr. Cicero.
Sherlock.
Mr. Kernar.
Sherlock.
Mrs. Cronicle.
Nancy Sherlock.
Mrs. Larison.
Virginia Cypress.
Mr. Parker. Mr. Peppetown.
Virginia Cypress.
Mr. Sanford.
Virginia's Cypress.
Mrs. Smith.
Virginia's Cypress.
We have another tie, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry to disappoint you.